Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, January the 28th, 2025. It's 9:00 a.m., and we're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. We're very pleased today to have with us Ms. Kim Erwin, the executive director of the Brazos Pregnancy Clinic, to give us the invocation. Ms. Erwin.
Do you pray with me, please? "We thank you, Holy Lord God, for this day that you've given us. We thank you for teaching us your ways, for giving us guidance on governance, and we thank you, Father, for this counsel that you have chosen, each and every one of them, Lord God. We thank you for the people that have participated today. We thank you for this state and for this city. Help us as we go through this day, Lord God, to remember you in all of our thoughts and our ways, and to give you glory in everything that we do. In Jesus' name, amen."
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge the great state of Texas. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and invisible.
Well, we have a very special moment now in our county. This is a guy here that's embodied what it is to be a good employee of Hood County. He's only been working here for just a mere 32 years, and he's done an exemplary job, I want to tell you that. Everybody knows him, everybody respects him, but especially the members of the road crew and especially the citizens of Hood, Texas, Hood County, Texas. When it's snowing and dangerous outside, we can always count on Don Lenny. So let's everybody welcome and give a round of applause for Donald Lenny, who is retiring today after 28 years, 32 years of service to Hood County, Texas. Don Lenny.
Come on up here, Mr. Lenny. Now, I want you to take all this money and go to the car call and try to turn it into two million now, okay? I think you look a bit more conservative than that, but this is from all the officials here that you serve so well, I'll tell you that. But this is a certificate of appreciation presented to Donald Lenny in recognition of dedicated service to Hood County for later 1993 to January of 2025, presented at the Commissioner's Court on this 20th day of January 2025, signed by the judge and all the commissioners here of Hood County, Texas. Be sure to frame this and I put it up there, okay? No, this guy has done such a wonderful job. I tell you, when I first became the judge here, we had some incoming weather in Tech Stop, Paul New York, and that's going to take us some of our equipment or something that they need. And I said, "Do you guys happen to know a guy named Don Lenny?" "Oh, yes, we call him..." I said, "Why don't you call him up here?" He has a little bit more experience than us, and started to happen. So this guy is the best, and we're going to miss him. But you did pick a good guy, train a good guy to take your place, didn't you? And you feel like that he's going to be able to carry on in your name?
Yeah.
Is he here?
Yeah.
Why don't we come up here? You got a picture? Let's get him. Come on up here. Mr. Tugel. This old... How long has Mr. Tugel been working for? How many years have you been with him?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight? Okay. I want to tell you one thing right here. These two guys right here, everybody in Roadoff really works with these two guys, really likes them, respects them. They know what to do, they respect them, and you do a good job in the community. Welcome, welcome aboard, and thank you for all that you've done. Let's give a... If you need anything, you can call them, okay? And then call on him, too.
All right. Thank you all. You get to speak.
And the first is Stephen Burge, five years. Sheriff Deeds.
Stephen's done a great job, he's on duty today, so if he comes back to work, he's putting on purple, fantastic job, so happy to have him.
Good deal. Bee?
She's not at work today.
She's not at work today, she's taken off, okay. Next is Chad Hamm.
He's working today, so he's not able to.
Okay. What about Nathan Livingston?
He's here.
All right, Nathan.
Nathan is from my deputy's five-year service, does a great job, he's changing on his day off, so proud to change everyone, my deputy. Just as special.
Good. Thank you. And the next... I know this lady right here, I work, I see her every day up here. Ms. Weaver, ten years. Does it feel like 70 years in dog years up here, working for Doug Gillum up here?
It's hard.
All right. Denise Weaver, 10 years. Good, congratulations.
So this is the real boss of JP Preisinge Four. And, you know, if Mom ain't happy, nobody happy, so I try to keep this lady happy because some of you may know me, but it takes a lot to keep me in line, this lady does it. So she does an outstanding job, and the day she retires is when I retire. Because I would be totally lost without Denise for your service, and JP Four in line is doing a great job for the county. Wait till you see our budget and what they did, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Christine. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Citizens at Large Comments, and we do have two people signed up for that. And number one is Phil Harris. Mr. Harris.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate you letting me speak.
Can you pull the mic up, Larry? There you go.
Is it there?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Well, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I wanted to address Founder's Day as we celebrated in Hood County and Granbury. I don't have a clue about who the founders are. I don't think many other people have a clue about who they are, and I'd like to recommend that we return to General Granbury's birthday. He was a great general. He did his duty in the Civil War. He died at the Battle of Franklin, Tennessee, and I have stood within 100 feet of where they claim he fell. And I think it would be a great honor to return to General Granbury's birthday. Our citizens don't have a clue who founders are, but they know who General Granbury is. Our visitors, I've had visitors from other cities say, "When... What happened to General Granbury's birthday? When are you going to have General Granbury's birthday celebration?" Because they were used to looking at that. So I'm going to take a little bit of license here and suggest to this court that you just declare that we're returning to General Granbury's birthday, and have a nice day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Next, I don't know if we know this next person. Her name is Christine Leffwitch. Do you anybody know her? But she's going to speak. Christine.
I'm not going to be contentious or anything. So I got some exciting news last Thursday that I wanted to share with the court. I don't know if y'all are familiar with Texas Association of Counties Leadership 254. It is a 14-month executive leadership program. It was a rigorous application, and I am one of 22 elected officials that were chosen to participate in this program. It is... The theme of the program is growth, reflection, and transformation as a leader, and I will be participating in four learning retreats over the next 14 months. It is fully paid for by TAC, lodging, food, everything, and I'll be kicking off the first module at the Wildcatter Ranch in Graham in just a few short weeks. So I wanted to share that great news because I'm super thrilled to have been selected. There were over 70 applicants, so.
Good, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we go into the next item of business, which is a miscellaneous business to be discussed and considered for approval. Item number one, discuss and take appropriate action to appoint members of the Hood County Historical Commission pursuant to Local Government Code Title 10, Parks and Other Recreation and Cultural Resources, Chapter 3, 18, Historic Preservation by Counties, Subchapter A, Historical Commission, Section 3, 18.003. The commission must be composed of at least seven residents of the county. The members of this commission shall be appointed during the month of January of odd-numbered years and are appointed for a term of two years. We have gotten nine applications to be on this committee, and I... All look like they're fine, upstanding people here, and I would like to make the recommendation or the motion that we just go ahead and let all nine of them be on the commission. It says seven. If you wanted to serve, I see Mr. Foreman back there that would like to serve, and if you want to be on the historical commission, why not have an extra two members? You never know what can happen, so I would like to move that we just go ahead and just appoint all nine applicants who... And I don't even have that.
Yeah, I have their names, so, yeah. I think we're very blessed to have so many citizens that have volunteered to serve on this commission. It's outstanding that they want to take their time to help preserve the historic parts of Hood County and Granbury. So I would second the motion, and I'll name the nine people. Gary Foreman, James Dickens, Tammy Clark, Christie Massey, Leslie St. Germain, Norm Tyndall, Todd Gathings, Rebecca Barnes, and Sylvia Hickey.
You say all eight of them?
Yes.
That's all nine of them, all right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to all nine members. You did a good job. Thank you. All right, item number two, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the resolution requesting the dissolution of the Brazos Regional Public Utility Agency. Yes, sir. We know Mr. Amud himself up here.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. Yeah, this is really, for us and for our future planning, it's a great moment that we consider because we're... It's a huge increase in our treatment capacity, which will carry us easily into the 2040s. It's something that I know that, you know, everybody has to basically put up with the revenues you get, try to see what you can accomplish, and this we consider to be a great, great victory for the price we paid. It's after a lengthy and long negotiation. Just quick history on this, and I think the information may be in front of you, but when Johnson County Special Utility District and AMUD, when we purchased the SWAT plant back about 2011 from the Brass River Authority, we had to create an agency that allows both partners, you know, operating authority and everything. Since they've now... JSU has sold out their interest to us. We are the sole owners. The boards of both AMUD and the agency are the same five members. There's a lot of duplication of effort, as well as counting and other things that really it's inefficient, doesn't need to be done. What we'd like to do is basically eliminate the BRPUA, bring everything under the AMUD banner, and that way we have more efficiency of operations. So that's where we're at. Both our legislators are looking at supporting a local bill in this effort. We don't expect any pushback, but I think a resolution of support from y'all will go a long ways to kind of keep everything going through the legislature smoothly, so that's the request that's before you.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions?
Richard English, General Manager, AMUD, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay.
I just have a comment. It's just another instance where they don't have a way to get out of something. We got to go back to the legislature and double-dip with them. I couldn't help it, I had to say that. But so Birdwell, Senator Birdwell and Representative Slosson, you've talked to them, they're going to...
Yes.
This should be a consent agenda item, actually.
It is. It should be local and contested.
Okay, okay, good.
Basically go through. I'm sure there'll be, you know, a committee hearing or two. There have been in the past on things we've had, but I really don't expect any issues with this.
Sounds good.
Actually, we're just removing an extra layer of government control that we don't need.
Right, exactly.
That's the bottom line.
Yeah, I'd like to do this every court, so... Sorry.
I make motion that we approve the resolution requesting the dissolution of the Brazos Regional Public Utility Agency, as stated.
Second.
Our motion is made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the resolution requesting the dissolution of the Brazos Regional Public Utility Agency, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Okay? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. English.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Item number three, discuss and take appropriate action to reinstate the county sheriff's office ride-along program. Sheriff Deeds.
Judge, Commissioners, we're always getting asked by citizens if they can ride along and learn more about what's going on in Hood County and what we do, and I'm always trying to encourage that, to get them to come in, have me out to speak to them, anything we can do, but then the ride-along program is a big part of that, to really get them out there and see what's going on. So we put together a plan and has rules and regulations and who's eligible, who's not eligible, and basically we go along with like the CGUS requirements and on what citizens not eligible for, and get it all spelled out, and then on the back of that, then we have the sheet to fill out, the liability agreement. Had the county attorney office look at this, and everything's good to go, if you guys think it's good to go. But I think it would really help, all the questions we get, all the people that we want, that want to find out what's going on, we'd really like to be able to accommodate them and help them learn more, and not put them in any danger, but just get them out there so they can see what's going on.
Mr. Phillips, you think that should any of these ride-alongs get injured in this, that this liability agreement protects the county? Assumption of risk, too, isn't it?
Was this sent to Alan, or...? It must have been, right? Was... Did Alan review this? Or... Okay, okay, okay. I personally didn't, but if, I mean, if he signed off on it, then that's good. I mean, I didn't personally read this, but, I mean, we've done it in the past, and so...
Yeah, there's a release of liability, an indemnification agreement that has to be signed if you want to scroll to that page.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Well, sorry, it's not much, but I guess, yeah, we... Somebody from my office reviewed it, so we're good.
Common law doctrine called assumption of risk. If you're riding along with the sheriff and you get injured, I guess, you know...
Yeah.
There's the release.
Right, that's good.
I think the sheriff will protect you, so that's good.
All right. If not, do I hear a motion?
As I move that we approve the action to reinstate the Hood County Sheriff's Office ride-along program.
Second. Made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the... And reinstate the Hood County Sheriff's Office ride-along program, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimous. Sheriff, good luck. Thank you. Okay, item number four, discuss and take appropriate action to enter into an inter-local agreement with Tarrant County Medical Examiner's Office to provide medical examiner services to Hood County. This is something that I received in the mail from the Tarrant County Medical Examiner's Office. It doesn't require Hood County to use their services, but it'd be there if they need it, if the JPs do need it. So I think it's actually a good deal. We used to have this, and I think during COVID, they got really behind and had to do away with the program, so I'm glad that they've sent it to us. So I really think we should go ahead and have this available for Hood County. It makes things easier should something happen, so.
My question was, why is it backdated to November the 4th? And I've spoken with our auditor, and we have been using them and making payments to them during that time, about $57,000 between November 4th and now for autopsies, and so as long as the... I don't know if there's any of the JPs here. I reached out to all the JPs to get their feedback. Dub was here, but I guess he had to go to court, so I think they have the option to use that American Forensics, I think was the name of the other company.
It was?
There was another company that actually, a former JP, Hal, had brought to court when, as you mentioned, when Tarrant County got backed up, they asked to be able to switch to another company called American Forensics, and we had approved that, but this doesn't... They can still have the option if they want...
Yeah, they have that option. It is, gives us an option. We don't have to use them, but we may need to use them, so I think we should. So do I hear a motion?
As I move that we approve the action to enter into an inter-local agreement with Tarrant County Medical Examiner's Office to provide medical examiner services to Hood County.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to take appropriate action to enter into an inter-local agreement with the Tarrant County Medical Examiner's Office to provide medical examiner services to Hood County. Do I hear a second? Second. Seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Item number five, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the following schedule for the placement and removal of flags along the sidewalks surrounding the historical courthouse. February 22nd to 25th, install Texas flags for Texas Independence Day, remove on March 7th, then the SRT and Texas Heroes Foundation would be responsible for that. B, May 23rd, 2025, install American flags for Memorial Day, remove May 30th. SRT, Sons of the Republic of Texas, will do that, headed up by Phil Harris, who's here present today, and did this schedule. Item C, June 27th, 2025, install American flags for Independence Day, remove July the 11th. Again, the Sons of the Republic of Texas will take care of that. And D, October 31st, 2025, install American flags for Veterans Day, remove November the 14th. And the Sons of the Republic will do that, too. So this is basically what we've had for last year at the courthouse, and I think it looks very nice, the way it's done around the courthouse. We've got a budget. People have donated flags. We haven't even had to spend the $500 budget that was allocated for that. Phil Harris has done three...
Bought three flags.
Three flags. We've... He's done a superb job of doing that. It looks very tastefully done. It looks very good. I see Greg Harrell shaking his head in improvement. I think so, too. So do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the schedule as listed for placement and removal of the flags along the sidewalk surrounding the historical courthouse.
Second. A motion has been made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the schedule for the placement and removal of the Texas and American flags around the historical courthouse, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
I'd like to pick on a word. The word surrounding is not accurate. It's going to be in front of the courthouse.
In front of the courthouse, right.
So where the... What, the Travis later, is that?
Right, that's where it's done now, instead of all the way around there on the deal. I think that's what we're doing it, so with that modification, then.
Yes.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Phil, thank you very much, and thank you and the Sons of the Republic of Texas for doing that. Item number six, discuss and consider for approval the use of the second floor of the courtroom of the historic courthouse on Saturday, March 1st, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for the Seventh Annual Texas Independence Celebration hosted by the Sons of the Republic of Texas, the Davy Crockett Chapter. And again, Sheriff Deeds has already agreed to open the courthouse for us and to be there to provide security, for protecting all the memorabilia and property there in the historical courthouse, so thank you, Sheriff Deeds, for always agreeing to do that for us. So do I hear a motion?
As I move that we approve the use of the second floor courthouse in the historical courthouse on Saturday, March 1st, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for the Seventh Annual Texas Independence Celebration hosted by the Sons of the Republic of Texas, Davy Crockett Chapter.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the use of the second floor of the courtroom of the historic courthouse on Saturday, March 1st, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for the Seventh Annual Texas Independence Celebration hosted by the Sons of the Republic of Texas, the Davy Crockett Chapter, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item number seven, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the request of the Sheriff's Office to purchase a new 2023 Chevrolet Silverado for transport not to exceed $45,000 from Fund 55. Anticipated insurance revenue of $41,571 will be deposited to Fund 55 for a net cost of $3,429. Sheriff Deeds.
Judge, Commissioners, yeah, the reason for all of this is back when it snowed a little bit, we had a transport officer dropping off at Somerville County over to Johnson County, and then he was coming back and was by himself, and lost control of the vehicle and hit a pipe fence and a cedar tree, I think. and hit a pipe fence and a cedar tree, I think. So anyway, they totaled it, and just like the, the item said, that they're going to pretty well pay it off, just lacking that, that little bit. So we found, Denise found a 2023 pickup, and that's the exact same year model as what it was. And this is brand new, it was just sitting, somebody else had ordered it and then didn't pick it up, and so it's still brand new, no mileage, and so it worked out perfect for us. They needed to get rid of it, and so we got a better deal than going after a 2025, so. I'd ask that you approve this transaction so we can get that and pay the difference of the, I don't remember exactly what it was, 3,000...
3429.
Yeah, I didn't bring that copy up here, so.
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the Sheriff's Office request to purchase a new 2023 Sheriff's, sorry, Chevrolet Silverado for transport not to exceed $45,000 from Fund 55, with anticipated revenue of $41,571 will be deposited to Fund 55 for a net cost of $3,429.
Second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to purchase a new 2023 Chevrolet Silverado for transport not to exceed $45,000 from Fund 55, for a net cost of $3,429 after insurance revenue, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you for finding a good deal.
Item number eight, discuss and take appropriate action to approve transferring $4,300 from the district clerk's salary line into the part-time budget line to allow for a temporary employee to work from Tuesday, January the 28th, 2025, through Friday, February, Friday, March 28th, 2025. This position will pay $21.63 an hour. Ms. Melanie Graft, yes, ma'am?
Good morning. I'm not asking for any additional money, I'm just, I just want to do a line item transfer. This person is familiar with the systems in the district clerk's office. I'll be gone next week, so this individual is needed for the next 60 days to just help bridge that gap.
Okay. Any, have any questions? Any discussion?
But...
I'll do it.
Any issues with part-time or...
It'll be considered a temporary position.
Okay.
Is that about your motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of $4,300 from the district clerk's salary line to a PT budget line to allow for this temporary employee to work from today, January 28th, through Friday, March 28th, on a part-time basis at $21.63 an hour.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the transfer of $4,300 of our district clerk's salary line into the part-time budget line to allow for a temporary employee to work from January the 28th, 2025, through Friday, March 28th, 2025, will pay $21.63 per hour, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you, ma'am. Item number nine, discuss and take appropriate action to approve revisions to the Hood County manager new hire transfer policy. Will it be so well?
Yes, this is the same policy you seen last court, and it was tabled, so some revisions were made, they're all in yellow. I have a copy, if you need to see a copy. I just need it approved, or if you want to adjust any of the wording.
After the fact, is I have any questions or problems?
Oh, I, golly, I didn't really, I didn't think that we needed to make that a policy to necessarily automatically transfer the emails. I can understand that that may come into play from time to time, but I don't think that we need to necessarily make that, it's an additional expense, it's a little bit extra trouble to have to get the licensing and stuff like that. And I didn't think that, I mean, this has happened many times in the past, and it's never been a problem, so I didn't necessarily think that we needed to make a policy that specifically required that. We have a way of dealing with it when it comes up, so I didn't, didn't think that we needed to make that a policy.
I disagree. I think it's very important for it to be clearly stated, what, and to give IT the direction on what they need to do, instead of wondering, you know, do I do it, do I not do it? I think it makes it much more clear for IT to give them the exact direction that we expect. The expense is very minimal and actually is only temporary, because once the email is transferred over to the new person and to, well, the email's transferred to the old supervisor, once they get the information they need, that email can be done away with, so that is a very temporary expense. So I, I think it's very important that this be a stated policy, just for the main reason to give IT the direction on what they need to do when employees transfer.
Yeah, I, I have to weigh in with Commissioner Samuelson on this one. So if you're, if you have an employee in off, in the, let's say, the county attorney's office, and that employee is dealing with certain items that deal with the county attorney's office via email, and that employee transfers to another office, it doesn't make any sense at all to me that that email goes, because whoever's dealing with that employee is dealing with the county attorney's office via that employee. So it seems like the cleanest way to do it is to transfer, end the email at that point with the county attorney's office, because that person's conducting busi, I would think that all they're doing is conducting business as the county attorney's aide, not doing personal business on it. So it seems to me like, and you would start a new email, just like we did recently, and then disconnect whatever we're paying for one and start a new one with a clean slate. So I have to agree with, it's just, it's just a directive to the IT department to give them some direction as to what to do, because yes, in the past, it hasn't been a big deal, but it hasn't been an issue because it hadn't been brought up. So I'm have to agree with Commissioner Samuelson on this one.
Let me ask this, and this may be more of a question for Drew. Speaking of the county attorney's office, he just received two employees from the sheriff's office who were in the middle of conducting business in the sheriff's office, moving over to the county attorney's office, doing the same type of work. Had their email changed, that would affect prior working emails that they probably need access to. So then my question for Drew would be, could both emails go with that employee?
But they're, those employees are working, they're working in a liaison, they're working back and forth, right?
Correct, but based off of the way this is worded...
Right.
It pretty much says every employee.
Right, and that's, that's kind of, my point is I think there may be times when this needs to happen, but I think there's also times, again, as a blanket policy, I don't think that it necessarily makes sense, and this will be a perfect example of that. There's some continuity in there. I mean, is this a hill worth dying on? No, it's probably not that big of a deal, but it is an interruption that may very well not need to take place, so.
And so for this particular instance, with the two employees that moved from the sheriff's office to the county attorney's office, I was asked by both department heads to keep those active and not to move them to anything new, just because of all the cases they were working on, they would lose access to that information.
So how about making something optional in here that says the department head or elected official?
At the request of?
Yeah, that, at the request of the, either one of those where the employee is transferring from.
Because I could see the exact opposite happening, where somebody's moving from the sheriff's department to somewhere else, and the sheriff's department needs to have access, needs to know everything that they were working on to continue those investigations or that work, but the employee is still getting them, and they're having to keep transferring them to someone else in the sheriff's department, so, or there could be sensitive information that the person doesn't need to have access to anymore, and they should have, they should not have access to the continuing investigations or cases that they were working on before.
Absolutely. And that's the thing, it's like darn if you do, darn if you don't, but normally what, what we have been doing in the past is just basically going by, I guess, the departments and what they would like to do. Like I said, in this particular case, I kind of stirred this, we were pitted against two departments that had different opinions, and so that's what kind of brought this to light. And so in the case of the sheriff and the county attorney, though, of course, they wanted all that information and continuity to continue, so we left it that way. So I don't know the best route, if it, if the court just wants to say something like at the request of the department heads, that's kind of what we've been doing in the past. It's really up to the court just to kind of give us some kind of guidance right now, so we're not kind of pitted against other department heads.
Yeah, I think if we add right before where it says current employees transferring, if we add at the request of the transferring supervisor or department head, elected official, which word do you like?
What do you mean? I mean, yeah, it needs to be elected or department head.
So at the request of the transferring elected official or department head, current employees transferring between departments will immediately be, so just preface it with that.
Yeah, that way it, okay, that works. I think that that makes that make more sense. It's not necessarily an in-place requirement for a policy, just with this particular example, how that wouldn't have played out all that well. So yeah, that works for me.
What do you, anybody else?
Oh, y'all got it worked out?
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you...
I'm fine.
Judge, you all okay with that?
Do you want to maintain it until you make the correction and vote on it the next time, or do you...
I think just add that language right there, and that'll work.
With that language added?
Yes.
The language being?
At the request of the transferring elected official or department head, comma, current employees transferring between departments.
You have it, Christine, okay? Second by...
I'll second.
Commissioner Andrews. Okay? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right, next item. Item number 10, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the changes made to the Hood County Commissioners Court Rules of Conduct, Rules of Procedure, Conduct, Decorum at Meetings of the Hood County Commissioners Court during the last regular Commissioners Court on January the 14th of 2025. Commissioner Eagle.
Okay, so we voted on a couple of tweaks last time. I incorporated them as we discussed, and then cleaned up the red, and that we had some red stuff, red type and different, and blue, I think, so I cleaned all that up, put it back on the agenda, and I think there's a couple of more tweaks now that I, I know that Commissioner Andrews had talked about, suggested one, so I did what I was supposed to do from the last time, so I'm going to open the floor up.
Yeah, I, I would rather see a tweak on the item, Roman numeral eight there, the, the language, can you go to that one? Yeah, the underlined language here, it puts it, it, it puts it, it's read into the record, then you go directly to the public participation, then whoever put it on the item to, to speak on it. And I think it would be better to say immediately, following the reading of the agenda item into the record by the presiding officer, the court member who placed the item on the agenda shall be permitted to make introductory comments before public participation and discussion by the court. I think just kind of as a way of shaping the direction of the discussion, turn it over to whoever put it on and let them make an introduction of the item.
I had a similar, similar comment, a little different. I was just suggesting, once the agenda item is read into the record by the presiding officer, the court member who placed the item on the agenda will have the option to speak first or after citizens who complete the participation form, but very similar to what, what you said. Jack, did you, I interrupt you, sorry.
No, my position is I think the, whoever places the item on the agenda should speak, and then let the public, if we do have public speakers that have signed up, you know, speak after that, after it's introduced by whoever placed it on the agenda.
Yeah. I agree with that.
I have another revision.
And I, I, okay, so I think the whole idea is to give the agenda item to the person that put it on there. And, you know, there may be a time when that person would like to hear what everybody's got to say first, that'd be their option, I guess, and there may be some introductory material they want to do, but I think, you know, trying to come down with a steadfast, hard rule on that particular issue, I think the biggest part is just when, if I put something on the agenda, give it to me when you read it in there, that's what I'm after. And then I think Commissioner Andrews' language is good, Commissioner Samuelson, I think accomplishes the same thing, and I'll be hap, and basically, I'll be happy to go back and, to the drawing board with it, or we can try to vote that in now, if that's all, the only changes you guys have.
I have one. The one about the, about the comments at large, we had the attorney, the county attorney speak on that, and he said that it was good the way it was written, rather than you're adding the language, other than responding to inquiries with a statement of a specific factual information or a recitation of existing policy. Mr. Mills is here again to say that, that he thought that that would enter into a discussion about it, which is the total antithesis of the open rule policy on the deal, so.
Actually, that, Judge, that was the changes he told us to make.
Well, I, I haven't seen, I, all I have is what I had last time. I don't have any, I don't have this, I didn't get this before court, so where, which item is it?
Underlined part of C.
Okay, it's C on page...
I don't have any of this, I didn't get this before court.
Scroll, scroll up.
Go back to, go to page two, please.
This is what it was. He wants to add this other language, will not be allowed to enter any discussion. That's what you had said, you thought that was better, rather than saying, enter into, what is specific factual information, that that was going to enter into a discourse about that and was going to be...
Right, okay, so that, the language there underlined is what I recommended as a change to the prior wording. The prior wording kind of opened it up to, you can respond in general, so if somebody says they don't like you, and you can say, well, I don't like you either, I mean, that's not a proper response, just as an example, but if there's a true inquiry, a true question, and the example I gave last time is somebody said, is there a burn ban in place? And you can answer, no, there's not, let's say. That's a true response, that's appropriate under the law, other than that, you're not supposed to respond. So when it says, other than responding to inquiries, I think that's still fine if you're responding to a true question.
And that's a, that is the language straight out of the statute.
Yeah, yes.
So that's, all I did was make the changes that you suggested.
Yeah, that, I think we're, we're okay just responding to inquiries.
You all on with it?
Yes, yes, sir.
Anything else?
What's the, do you want to read the change to eight?
Okay, yeah, it, all right, can we go scroll back up to eight on the, Roman numeral eight?
Page three.
All right, the underlined part here... All right, the underlined part here, I think that, the wording I had was immediately following the reading of the agenda item into the record by the presiding officer, "The court member who placed the item on the agenda shall be permitted to make introductory comments before public participation and discussion by the court."
So is that a motion to accept these with that change?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, I want to remain by Commissioner Andrews, who accept the changes in the rules of procedure with the exception of making the.
Comment of be permitted to make introductory comments before the public speaking, you do have that?
I've got it, I've got it right here, I can hand it to.
Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Now, that brings us to, number 11 has been pulled, number 12, convenient to executive session, we'll do that at the end of the Commissioners' Court, so that brings us to item number 13, which is, discuss and take appropriate action to adopt a resolution, calling on the Hood County Appraisal District to hire a third-party forensic audit firm to complete a forensic audit of the prior five years as soon as possible, and properly deliver said audit to the taxing entities. That's, you place that on, Mr. Eagle?
Commissioner Eagle.
Yes, sir. So, and the resolution kind of speaks for itself, but on Tuesday night, the City Council, this has kind of been an ongoing issue for the last several months, and this item was on the agenda for Granberry City Council on Tuesday night, and the City Council voted to move forward to the HCAD app to request that they do a forensic audit. We have until noon on Wednesday to get an agenda item in, and so I went ahead and put this item on the agenda from the Commissioners' Court's perspective, requesting a forensic audit, and it's, it's going to certainly be for some specific issues, not an overall, but some specific issues which they're going to have to decide on scope later. And then later on, I found out that the HCAD went ahead and voted to, to pursue, to have Jeff Law, the chief appraiser, start negotiations with somebody to have a forensic audit done, just, they just need to determine the scope, you know, the parameters of what they want done. So it is in the works, now this resolution is just basically asking, repeating ourselves to ask them to please do this, and it sounds like that they're working on it, so I don't know if this resolution, if we should go ahead and just vote on it anyway, or just not worry about it. I'm, I'm going to put that on the table and let y'all give me some direction.
I think it's mooted. They've already passed the motion saying that they would do the audit. I've got here that Mark McDonough made a motion to authorize the chief appraiser to schedule a future meeting with Weaver Auditing Firm to begin the contract negotiation process, second by Scott Badley, and that, the motion carried unanimously, so the audit is already going forward, so.
Well, okay, are you through?
Yes.
Okay, so here's, here's the only caveat to that, how's it going to get paid for? And my understanding is, I did speak with Jeff Law yesterday, and my understanding is, is that there is a contingency account with X amount of dollars in it that is there, available, and the, I think the discussion, I did not make it last Thursday because I was in Denton, but my understanding is the discussion went, do we roll that into the, to a budget item for the audit, or do we give it back to the taxing entities, do a budget amendment, and then send it back to the entities? And I think that the decision was made to take this item in a contingency fund, return it to the taxing entities, do a budget amendment when they figure out about what they're going to have to spend, and I see some heads nodding who, people who were there Thursday, and then we will have an opportunity to accept or reject that, each taxing entity, so it will come, it will be coming back to us as far as approving that when we get it. But for purposes of this resolution, I'm not, I tend to agree with the judge on this, I'm not really sure we need to do it, so.
Oh, I mean, one of the resolutions that we passed earlier this year gave them direction on how to pay for this, either to set it aside in their, to create a line item in their budget for the forensic audit, which they chose not to do during the budget process, so now we have this step, which I'm very thankful that the HCAD voted to go forward with the forensic audit, and I think that that's a good idea, but it, there wasn't, there was an opportunity back when they were developing their budget, knowing that the, a couple of the taxing entities were looking at this, that they could have built this into their budget the way we had requested originally, but at this point, you know, if they're doing the forensic audit, they also, I think, didn't they also vote to return $100,000 of unused budget back to the taxing entities?
Yeah, that's, that's the money I'm talking about.
Okay.
So I, so I'm, at this juncture, I'm going to stand down on this agenda item and not make any motion.
Well, that moves that we go up here, I agree with you, Commissioner Eagle, so that means the three speakers, y'all do not have to speak in view of what Commissioner Eagle has done, he's really, in effect, pulled it from the agenda, okay? All right. And I think that's what the, after they get the negotiations, we'll find out what they're going to do, they're going to decide the cost, how many years, everything else, so let's see what they do, okay? But we don't have any, the Commissioners' Court doesn't have oversight over the appraisal district, they're an independent body on the thing, all the taxes, taxing entities can get together and make a decision about passing things, so I think that's the right thing to do. Let's see what they're going to do.
Well, Judge, if you, if.
Or do y'all want to speak?
I got one last thing, I didn't realize speakers had signed up, I did not, I did not know speakers had signed up, so I wasn't trying to do that, to shut them up, you know, but, but at this juncture, I'm not really sure there's, I'm not really sure there's much to say until, but I would, I would urge you to come back on the budget, when it comes back as a budget amendment from the HCAD, and we do have oversight from that perspective because we have oversight over, we can vote to, to accept their budget or not to, so in that regard, there, and we pay them, they're, you know, we're one of their customers, you know, so to speak, so, but again, I'm sorry to the people who signed up to speak, I didn't know I was stepping on your toes there, I would have, I don't know what I'd have done, but.
That, Mr. Harrell, all right, let's go. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Is there anything that any of the Commissioners, which to pull or question on the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion?
Move that we approve the consent agenda as stated.
Second.
Made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the consent agenda as stated, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further comment or discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, that brings us to, you don't even have any road ops for your last meeting after only 32 years, Mr. Donald Lenny, we're going to miss you, I'll tell you that, we're going to miss you. So that brings us to development and Mr. Clint Head, and the first item is a public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of Pirate Village Lot 1R Block 3, so at this time, at 10 minutes, no, at 3 minutes to 10, wow, 3 minutes to 10, we hadn't done that in a long time, have we, Mr. Head?
No.
We're going to enter into a public hearing at this time, so what do you have, Mr. Head?
Morning, Judge, morning Commissioners. This replat's really simple, it's being done to dedicate 46 square foot of right-of-way at the northwest corner of the lot. When they poured that curb, it was at such an angle, they increased the radius of the curb, and that corner fell in the street, well, we couldn't have the property out in the street, so they're dedicating that right-of-way to get it out of the street. This plot lies in the road corridor, District Precinct 3, survey, we had water and sewer, and all comments have been addressed.
Okay, is there any member of the public here wish to address anything about the replat of Pirate Village Lot 1R Block 3? If not, at this time, then at 1 minute to 10 o'clock, we convening back into Commissioners' Court, and do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the replat of Pirate Village Lot 1R Block 3.
Second.
By Commissioner Wilson to approve the replat of Pirate Village Lot 1R Block 3, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Now, at this time, let me see, we got Mr. Ryan here to help us with this one, at this time, at 10 o'clock on the dot, we are convening into a public hearing to discuss and consider adopting the master thoroughfare plan for Hood County. So, I'm opening it up now for a public meeting, yes, sir, Mr. Head, you started off.
All right, Judge, this is the map part of the master thoroughfare plan, the actual plan and report will be considered later after the map's approved, so we have the engineer here, if there's any questions, I think we've added a few priority streets, and hopefully the report will, well, I know the plan will help us preserve that land that's not been developed, if a developer comes through, they have to respect the areas we're calling for roads on now, we didn't have that, that ability to without this map adopted, so, but the actual report is what you'll need to seek funding with.
Anybody have any?
Ryan Jones is here, if you've got any questions.
Well, come on up, Ms. Christine Lefwitch.
Did you fill out a form?
No, it's a public hearing, it's still in progress.
So, my only question is, I've lived in Pecan for over 20 years, and I know we've identified that third exit entrance out of Pecan, and my understanding is that's not actually eligible for public funding, and so, and it's going to have to be paid for by the residents of Pecan, so why is it being included as part of this master plan for the county when it's going to have to be paid for privately? So that's my only question.
Okay, that's a very good question, too. You mean you don't want to be taxed for any of that?
Mm-hmm.
It's only going to be part of $30 million, so. Yes.
Good morning, good, good question, Christine. What I would say to that is that this plan does not identify or designate any funding for any of these projects at this time, so what this plan does is it identifies the intent for, for these thoroughfares to be improved at some point in the future. The, I think the, the piece that you're referring to would be the bridge crossing of the Brazos River. The, the rest of that thoroughfare coming down to County Road 325, I think, as Clint alluded to, is going to be very important for us to have on the plan so that we can preserve the right-of-way if and when funding is secured for that project that crosses the Brazos and serves as the entry to the con plantation, so I guess what I would say is that the plan is, it communicates the intent and allows the county to plan for these future projects, but it does not designate the funding or obligate the county to pay for any of these projects at this time, so that's going to be something that would have to be worked out in the future.
So you're, excuse me, but you're referring, I want to make sure we're on the page, because you don't have a pointer, I wish you had a pointer, but you're referring to the, on the, kind of the lower right corner of this, this orange, broken orange line, right?
That's correct, sir.
The thoroughfare to get out of Pecan, and then, so I'm trying to understand what the, exactly what the county clerk was referring to, is that?
That's it, I think it's B.
If I may, a opinion from John Cornyn, at the time, on October of 12, 3rd of 2000, this in summary, and I'll just read the summary without reading the whole thing, except in limited case government governed by Article 3, Section 52 F of Texas Constitution, a Commissioners' Court may not enter into an interlocal agreement with the municipality to repair roads within a municipality in which are private and not open for use by the general public. That's one point. In other words, you can't use tax dollars for private entity. Then, another opinion, JC 0503, the county is limited to extending public funds on the construction and maintenance of public roads, the county may not expend public funds to construct, improve, or maintain private roadways except it authorized by Article 3, Section 52 F of Texas Constitution. In general, a road may become a public road either pursuant to the statutory procedures set forth in the county road and easement domain laws by dedication or by prescriptive easement. So basically, those two AG opinions prohibit the use of county, state, and federal funds for private roads.
Is, is that, is that a private road?
Well, it makes, the only way that that can happen is if Pecan becomes open for public use.
Well, there's other parts of this, say, for example, the, the area on the other side of the bridge becomes developed, this, this plan that we have here will reserve the rights for that, for future expansion, so it's not just the Pecan issue that we're talking about, and yes, we all agree and know that public funds cannot be used for a private gated community, but this preserves, and I'm going to send it back to Ryan, preserves the, the rights and Clint for the development in that quadrant there that we're talking about. Right now, it's undeveloped property, so if this, and as y'all saw, when we did the, when North Central Texas COG did their traffic study, this area, these improvements that we have on this map helped relieve the congestion on the roads that we all hear about all the time, 144, Fall Creek, 377, so that's, I guess I'll hand it back to you, Ryan, to explain better than what I have, or Clint.
I wanted to address that, I agree with Dave, all y'all, and what y'all said about the private roads and whatever, now, if y'all wanted to remove it as a priority, that way it's not in a report, we're not being questionable about trying to seek funding, I do want to leave it on the map, because if it's ever developed, I can make people respect that eventually there will be a road there.
That's a good, good idea, and we don't have, as you stated at the beginning, the report is coming later, so we could adopt the map and then address any of these concerns in the report.
Yeah, I would agree with Nanette, what you said, and Clint, what you said, in terms of, I think it's important for us to leave this thoroughfare on the map, this is going to be a long-term planning document, so this is, this is a, a map and a document that's planning for the next 20, 30 years, and we're, the main purpose of this is to enable the county to plan for, maintain, or, plan for and anticipate, and then make the necessary transportation infrastructure improvements necessary to support the growth the county's going to see. So, while that area south of the con plantation's not currently developed, there's, you know, a strong likelihood that the next 20, 30 years, there may be some, some subdivisions or developments that are going to occur there that that road would, would then serve, as is the case with a lot of these thoroughfare plant, thoroughfares that are shown on the map, this, the need for, for a lot of these thoroughfares may not be now, but, but we do anticipate the need going to, is going to come within the next 20, 30 years. I think, Clint, the suggestion you made is probably a good one, in that currently that route is identified as a priority corridor based on the feedback we received at the steering committee meetings. I think revising that to have it more of a long-term proposal would be a great idea, and that's certainly something that we can, we can do, I don't know if that changes the action that's able to be taken. I don't know if that changes the action that's able to be taken this morning, if, if we can adopt it or make a motion to adopt it with the anticipated revision of that corridor, that specific corridor being revised to a long-term improvement in lieu of, and a, a near-term improvement, that may be something that y'all can consider.
That's, I, I agree. I think that's...
Securing that pathway there is a good idea for the future, so that, that seems to be a perfect compromise for what we're talking about.
And it keeps it from getting, without it on the map, we have no legal authority to tell somebody to respect there's going to be a road there.
Any other speakers?
Anybody else have any comment?
Yes, sir. I'll just make the comment that, that...
Who, who are you?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Tim Bolton. I live in Pecan, not too far from where that proposed line is, and I think for Pecan residents, the only private part of that would be the bridge, or really half that bridge. The rest of that is all county. So...
It's in, yeah, it's in county, but it doesn't, it only goes services Pecan.
At the current time, but if there's...
At the current time, yes.
If there's development...
But I mean, that's, I think that's the point of Commissioner Wilson, there's a, there's going to have to be some discussion, give and take on this.
Forty years ago, you could have made the same argument about Manbreno Highway. I mean, it only went straight to Pecan at that time.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Bob. Where's your watch? You have a very opinion to use, maybe say it home today.
How do you know? I'm John Lastman. This is not a Pecan thing, but my, my question or suggestion on the census of the master thoroughfare plan is to really take a look at safety. I know you have statistics on where accidents are taking place, on the system roads, fatalities are taking place, and put that in the plan so that, that, to me, that needs to be the best for you even looking at new roads and thoroughfares.
Would you, would you address that, please?
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent point.
That's an excellent point, and that's, that was one of the, the primary considerations and goals of this study, was to improve safety on our, our transportation around the countywide. It was increased mobility, safety were really the primary two considerations. And so we did review crash history data. We also had the entire model, or entire county modeled through COGS, North Central Texas Council of Government's regional traffic model. The results of that model with the improvements that we're proposing on this map were very positive. The, the performance of, of thoroughfares is measured as a level of service, and the level of service, the results that, that COG presented to us all were, you know, passing. And so, and that was countywide. We also identified some specific safety concerns that were brought up as part of the Steering Committee, public workshops. One of those was the Stroud's Creek location, which is kind of on the northwest side of, of the loop, northwest of the city of Granbury. But there was some, some access, restricted access locations where there would be flooding issues and, and lack of access in and out during certain rain events. There was also some, there was also a location of a dangerous intersection with the railroad. The Pecan Plantation access was actually originally brought forth as a safety concern due to the proximity to the Comanche Peak Nuclear Power Plant and potential evacuation of the Pecan Plantation if, if, you know, an event occurred at the power plant. So from a crash, crash history perspective, from a thoroughfare level of service perspective, and then known safety issues that were known by the Steering Committee and the stakeholders with, within the county, all of those issues were brought forth and considered as part of this plan. So we, we were confident, in addition to that, you know, with the anticipated growth of travel demands along these roadways, this thoroughfare will add lane capacity, which obviously is an important component to, to safety. So with all those considerations, I just want to assure you that, that safety was an important priority and an important consideration as we developed this plan.
And we, go ahead.
Comment?
Actually, let me, hang on, let me make this comment while, because I'm getting old and I'll forget.
Don't take too long, because I'm old, too, and I'm going to forget what I'm going to say.
We're both in the same boat, right? So we had, all of us had a meeting with DOT, with all the commissioners just last week, and I can assure you that safety is the number one issue with any, all the projects that are going on. And we went through various stages of things that are either happening now or going to happen, and that is the, probably the number one bullet point that they, the DOT looks at, is the safety side of the improvements, the additions, whatever we're doing. So it's just a slow process. But I think that safety, from my gathering, I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but that my, one of my big takeaways with, when I meet with the DOT on the projects that we're going, doing, or going to do, is that that is, the safety issue is a huge concern, and it's factored into, factored into all the planning that they do. Anyway.
Thank you. I'm Bob Tabor, and I'm a resident of Pecan, just happen to be the president of the board there. And I just want to remind the court that any decisions of what's considered private or public that involves money for our membership, that community requires a total membership vote. So if the county is looking for Pecan Plantation to fund that bridge, if you're going to call that private, we would have to undertake a complete membership vote to do that. No, no different than what you guys have to do here in a county assessing safety items, there's always a cost of everything. So I just want to remind the court of that, that there's been a lot of pros and cons about that particular egress, and that I'm sure there'll be more and more discussion over the long term. I just want to remind the court that it's just not an easy thing. We have to have a membership vote, all the members, majority of 66 and 2/3 at this point would have to vote to fund for a bridge. Okay? And I think there's a lot of other alternatives that, you know, the community would need to be educated on. Okay, so, but I do think and appreciate your consideration for the community, keep us informed, but, you know, we can't commit any money. I can't, nor the board can't, without a total membership vote. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I think at one of our last Steering Committee meetings, we had the heat maps, and he's talking about the safety. The model showed that, just the south highway, the one that's crossing south of Pecan, increased the safety on 144 and 377 at that intersection, which everybody knows is the worst intersection. So, I mean, those models covered all of that.
And also Fall Creek, that, the changes that are on here. We know, you know, in our meeting with Tech Dot last week, we, we bring up Fall Creek Highway every time, and there's a lot of, you know, it's in both Jack and my, well, it's not in my precinct, but almost 80% of my precinct travels on, on Fall Creek. And there's a, you know, that's a concern because there's no way for an emergency vehicle, for people to get out of, out of the way of an emergency vehicle on probably 75% of the stretch from, from Pecan, well, actually from Massey Road all the way up to, to 377. So we bring that up every time, every time we, we are told it's in the long-range plan, right-of-way's a problem, culverts are a problem. So having an alternative route to get from where Jack and my precincts come together up to 377 is going to really take a big weight off of...
Absolutely.
Fall Creek.
There are some significant changes in the works to happen this year, actually, you know, you know, in Precinct 3, which will, you know, help the Precinct 2 people, because, you know, the majority of people coming out of Pecan, especially out of the front gate, are coming up, right up through Precinct 3, and those changes are going to happen before the end of summer.
Well, the, the joint effort on the Old Granbury Road that y'all held, that's going to help significantly on 377, especially during construction.
There, I was told parenthetically here, the stretch from Temple Hall Highway from 377 all the way up to 51, they don't have enough money to do the whole stretch. So they're going to do as much as they can, and they're trying to decide where they're going to, you know, how they're, how that's going to look. It'll probably, they'll probably do everything they can do, starting at 377 and headed north. And just, I guess my visualization is when they run out of money, they'll bring it back into the, the regular road, I guess, but, so where, you know, the money is, demand is very high and money is very low. It's to get all, everybody's trying to get the same money.
We have a lot of traffic, but we're a little fish in a small, in a large fishbowl.
Right. Anyway, just letting y'all know on Temple Hall Highway, that, that is getting ready, they do have it funded, ready to go, and getting ready to start.
Anything else? Not going to hear, at 10:20, we are convening back into Commissioners' Court. Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make a motion to adopt the master thoroughfare plan with the, the map, the master thoroughfare plan map with the report to follow with the changes recommended by Ryan on the priority of the orange line.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Samuelson to adopt the master thoroughfare plan. Can we include all the maps for the project? He has done this project, second by, he, he's had a discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Carries unanimously. Okay, this brings us to the financial. Ms. Stephanie Matlock.
Good morning. I made some changes to what we're paying. I took off the tax note payment, so you'll see that on next court, it'll still be on time. So I would like to recommend that the court accepts and pays the bills of $344,534.67.
How much?
344. 344, 534.67. So it went from 3 million down to just 300,000.
But when is that payment going to get made?
It will get, yes, it will be made in next court. It's due on the 15th, so it'll still be on time, if not early.
And that's one of three, correct?
There's two payments going out the next court, so the final payment on the Justice Center, and then the tax note payment.
But this tax, this tax note payment is part of three. Didn't we do a three-year tax note?
We did. So this is the second payment.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
But were there two other payments that were removed?
So those are clerical-type things. So one of the attorneys changed their EIN, and so we avoided that payment, and then another one was a clerical update that needed to happen.
Just, just so we're clear, this is a tax note we took out for fire, vehicle, equipment, et cetera, right?
Correct.
This will be our second payment.
Yes.
We have one more payment due.
Correct.
Which will be next year, and it will be paid.
Mm-hmm.
This is a completely, they're not to be confused with a bond. This is not what a bond does. So I just want to make, get that clear, that this was a tax note for specific items, for a specific timeframe, for a specific amount, for a specific period of time, which is three years to start. And we, it'll be paid off, we're making the second payment right now, or next time. Thank you.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the payments for the period of January 8, 2025 through January 21, 2025, in the amount of $344,534.67.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, what else you got?
All right, it's the end of the month, so we have financial reports. So we've reviewed all the financial reports, the bank reconciliations, if you want to loop those together. We ask that the court accepts them. We've reviewed them all.
Everybody turned in the reports?
Everybody turned in a report?
God.
Well, most people.
68-day inspections for December.
I'll make that motion to accept the, the reports, the auditors recommending for the financial reports as well as the reconciliations.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Eagle to accept the reports and the reconciliation reports as recommended by the esteemed auditor of Hood County, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, now at this time, the only thing that we have is to adjourn, to go into executive session, to deliberate regarding the deployment of security personnel or devices or security audit under the Texas Government Code 551.076. Then we'll reconvene into a public session and take any necessary action if necessary. So we are convening at this time into executive session, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, it's 11:20, and we are back in Commissioners' Court. There was no action taken in the executive session, and would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I, yes, thank you. Make a motion to authorize our IT department to resolve any issues that were identified in the report.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Samuelson.
Second. IT to resolve any issues in the report, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and with that, at 11:22, we are adjourned.